Yes.
I think we have form.
Okay.
I'm logging in, I'm waiting to be called on here.
Andy, stop it.
For the roll call.
Just let me just hang in a second. Thanks for calling back, we'll talk as soon as I'm muted.
Aldo Boss.
Present here.
Aldo Boss is present, Aldo Harrington McKinney. Aldo Skidmore.
Here.
Aldo Skidmore is here. Aldo Hennick. Aldo Tierney. Aldo Tierney is here, Aldo Campbell.
Here.
Aldo Campbell is here, Aldo Bedar. We're only missing Aldo Bedar, um Aldo Hennick and Aldo Harrington McKinney.
We have form, wonderful. Thank you. Are there any disclosures or recusals among the members? No disclosures or recusals? Then we're going to move to updates. Item four, six oh eight, six one.
We have uh two registrants on that item. The first is Beth Sluis. Proposes and wants to speak.
Dolores, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Dolores, go ahead.
Good evening. I.
Excuse me, Dolores, if you have a second uh speaker on, you'll need to turn that off so we don't have feedback.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Dolores.
Thank you very much, I'm not very good at these machines, so thank you for your patience. I just wanted to say that I thank you for your service on the executive committee and for bringing the issues in Agenda Four forward about Oscar Meyer and Metro to the public's attention. I sent in an email today summarizing a number of concerns about the process so far involving Metro and Oscar Meyer. I don't need to read it aloud here. Basically, we need public transparency about these issues. And we need public input. So thank you for beginning that by having this session this evening. That's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. And then the next speaker, Wayzi.
It is uh Beth Sluis, is this, I'm sorry if I pronounced the name wrong.
Go ahead, Beth.
Thank you, there was a little mute button battling there.
Yeah, there was.
That's okay, it's, I'm, the Zoom meeting format, you know. Um, thank you for, uh, I agree with Dolores, I appreciate the willingness of the executive committee to uh look at uh the current Metro program that's being proposed for the north side of the Oscar Meyer site. Um, it, it, it would be, I guess my question is uh um throughout the Oscar Meyer planning process, through the Strategic Assessment Committee, um but most importantly through the Oscar Meyer Special Area Planning Process, uh the Metro facility was always outside of the Oscar Meyer uh Special Area Planning Process, so I was surprised to see this evening that it was on the agenda under Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. Um, I'm glad that it's being brought to the forefront. Uh, the, the community feels strongly about issues related to the Metro facility, to subsurface contamination, to toxic vapor gas infiltration systems that are being installed at Building Forty Three currently, the hazardous waste that sits open on the site, the roll-off boxes full of contaminated items, soil, oily pipes, we're not sure what's in those, a tanker car sitting out at the corner of Packers and Commercial that had to be secured behind fencing. I, I'm grateful that you are putting attention towards this and my hope is that the city will come up with a good way to provide some improved oversight as well as look towards uh putting out the RFP that didn't go out in July of last year to do a Phase Two study at Oscar Meyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Wayzi, do we have any more speakers on this?
Well, that's it, just the two.
Thank you. With that, we will go to our uh Tom Lynch to give the presentation.
Have a presentation, but I, maybe an update would be a more appropriate way to uh discuss this. Um, and then we have Bryn Bemis and Matt Walker who can also provide information. So I'm going to agree, this process has gone slower than we would have liked and I think it's gone slower than current owners, Reich Raven would have liked. Um, we initiated pursuit of um this property because when we did a Metro facilities analysis, typically this was the most cost-effective facility by basically a factor of two than any of the other sites that we looked at. And then with the possibility of the seven million dollars of federal monies, that just makes it that more attractive. However, it is a complicated site, it's a, it's a brownfield that use, it's a former industrial property which um some ways it's good for us in that it provides us an economical space. But there are challenges. I'll give us kind of a summary, I have about five bullets here and um then you can ask questions. Reich Raven, who is the current owner, has committed to closing outstanding uh W D N R BERT sites with remediation and the like and one of the speakers alluded to some of the stuff that they're doing with Building Forty Three. Uh Reich Raven has been very clear in telling us that the current agreement with Kraft Heinz, whom they purchased it from, uh prevents them or us from doing uh additional testing. Madison, meaning our, our collective team, would like more testing, so even though they are committed to closing all the D N R BERTs within the site, there are some issues, particularly with Building Fifty Three, that we would like more testing. According to their, without uh, they're breaching their contract with Kraft Heinz. So, uh, this is one of the reasons why this is, okay, so that um, we need to mitigate our risks through the agreement that we would, we would have with. We had hoped that we would have this agreement uh before the council, certainly by early twenty twenty, but this has become very, very complicated. Because of that, we're, we'd like to enlist an environmental attorney, in fact, contract for this environmental attorney will be introduced at the June sixteenth meeting uh for the council, uh council with perhaps an approval occurring uh at the July fourteenth meeting. We'd like that attorney to help us craft an agreement that um allows us to take advantage of the it's really a very cost-effective site, yet really uh structure the agreement so that the city does not take on additional risks. Uh, there's probably uh going to be through the use of perhaps escrow, escrow account that we can draw on if, once we obtain possession of the property and we do additional testings, we find that there's additional remediation efforts that are needed. Um, maybe just uh a perspective in that um these remediation concerns uh exist and they, they really kind of exist with or without Metro's use of um, if Metro did not take possession of, of that property, then um or some other industrial user, perhaps a distribution facility um would be using Building Fifty or Building Forty Three and then these same concerns would exist. Uh currently, the city does not have any control of the site, it's wholly in the hands of uh Reich Raven and they are under control of all the remediation efforts. Uh, if we were to obtain control of the site, meaning if we were to purchase, we believe that we would be a responsible player. And I think that's evidenced by the fact that we want to do additional testing, uh we want to make sure that it's a, a safe place for workers. When you think about the types of uh uses that could be used, you know, from anywhere from, you know, warehousing to distribution facilities to maybe some people would like to see office buildings and um or residential there, um, we feel like a storage and maintenance facility is a reasonable reuse or site that might have the concerns that exist at Oscar Meyer. There, I've, I've gone through all my bullets, um. If you have more detailed questions, we have Bryn Bemis, who's our hydrogeologist just on board. Uh, we also have Matt Walker that may be able to provide perspective, I think it's Matt Walker that's online that can give perspective on other purchases they have made of industrial properties and how.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? We'll start out with um Alder Abbas.
Yeah, thank you very much, I have uh quite a list of questions. Uh, so this uh Tom, this presentation from you, that, that is, that is it, there's no other presentation from the city staff, correct? At the moment.
There is, and I, I have a um I have available to me a um plat of the area if you want to do that, um it's, I want to say that the situation is I don't want to say it's dynamic, but it's ongoing, like we are interacting with Reich Raven at the um uh once a week, we're interacting as a team and talking about once a week and we're trying to determine our next steps.
Okay, so first I will say uh uh to my fellow orders, uh you might seen a couple of emails, you also noticed I put this on our agenda items, I requested for a presentation or a update, in other words, and the reason is Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan is moving forward uh with, with going through a feedback process at the moment. At the same time, uh city is, uh city have that desire to purchase Building Forty and uh Building Fifty Three, right? Uh Fifty Three.
Uh Forty Three and Fifty, but close, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I reversed it, okay, Fifty and Forty Three. Uh a Building Forty Three uh is the one which is highly contaminated.
Uh, yeah, I guess Building Forty Three is a spice room, it does have a vapor concern and they are mitigating them um and give um more um information regarding that. We um initially Metro hopes to use Building Fifty, I think that's our current focus and we know less about Building Fifty, and so that's perhaps where we, we would like.
Mm-hmm.
National testing.
So, yeah, so, so the reason I, I ask for this update is to start that process of public engagement, where public know what is happening, there's a, because of Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan is moving forward, the public is really concerned about the overall, the most contaminated place in Oscar Meyer, they, they really want to know, they want to know how this will impact their life and also to make this process transparent, and I really appreciate you came here, Tom, and I I'm glad to see Bryn here too, it's nice to give uh face to a name and I have quite a bit of question, I will start with the first question is about the contract. I know uh Reich and Robin, uh they, they told city they have a contract with Oscar Meyer and that, under that contract, they cannot give access to the city to do, to do Level Two testing, the city cannot perform any testing on the property, they can do testing and they can they can do mitigation or removal of contamination, but city cannot get involved until city purchase and then city can do whatever testing they want to do, true?
That's what they have said.
Okay, next question is, if this is true, what, what type of uh, my question is uh is there any way we, we get more information about this particular uh arrangement? Because if, if I hear this arrangement, it looks like Heinz Brother knew it, that site is extremely contaminated and that's might be a reason, I'm just saying this might be a speculation, I might, uh the reason I'm saying is that's the reason they put this clause in the contract, is there any way we can get uh more information on the uh arrangement?
So if I can just jump in for, for one second, um just, just to give context, we're very much in the middle of negotiations, uh they were still in fairly early stages of negotiations with, with Reich Raven. Um, and so we don't have our full team here, so we probably can't answer everything, um we would normally um in the course of discussing real estate negotiations, be at the finance committee, um we would likely have brought um our city attorney who's working on this as well as the real estate agent. Um, and if we were going to get into some of the, I don't know the rest of your questions, but some of the finer points of real estate negotiation, we would also probably have noticed the meeting to be able to go into closed session um if we were going to be getting some, some feedback from you about how to negotiate, so just to put that out there before we go too far down this, this list of, of questions that we as staff may not be able to answer all of them tonight. Um, we, we have been working with Reich Raven to try to get more information um and they've indicated that they are bound by contract with Kraft Heinz as to sort of how far they can as to what they can give us.
Yeah, I, I think it's important for the council, uh you know, and also for all of orders because it's a taxpayer money to really have this process transparent and we should know what is happening there. Uh Matt, as, as you mentioned, could you please explain when the city purchased building or, or, or land of brownfield, in your experience, what steps cities usually take?
So we might want to ask the other Matt to give a little bit of historical perspective as well as Bryn as to how this has gone when we've purchased other industrial.
And especially, yeah, especially I also want to know about Phase One and Phase Two testing, if you can also elaborate for the knowledge of the public, what is Phase One, what is Phase Two, which stage we do that when we purchase brownfield?
So, so I can maybe start and, and Bryn, you know, feel free to chime in and, and I'm Matt Mikulski, I don't, I can't figure out how to get my name changed on here, I don't seem to have control of that, but uh one way or the other, I'll, I'll, I'll still kind of give an update. Um, I mean, there's, there's, the city has used sort of different approaches to purchasing brownfield property i- in my tenure with the city uh depending on, on different circumstances. Uh, so for example, uh when we purchased the old Don Miller Car Dealership property on, along East Washington Avenue, uh we really didn't do any environmental assessment before we purchased the site. Uh, we knew that there was some contamination on the property um and we though, it was a, an opportunity for the city to acquire those sites and we knew that there were going to be opportunities through applying for EPA funding and through TIF to clean up what was there and, and that's what transpired. We purchased the property, uh we did a better job of characterizing the contamination that was there, we applied for funding and utilized TIF than to clean up the site. Another recent example was the purchase of the portion of the MG&E property for the Capital East District Parking Garage, now called the South Livingston Structure. In that case, MG&E had done some environmental study. Uh, we weren't entirely satisfied with what they did, we uh then went ahead and uh prepared uh some additional environmental due diligence work, uh completed that work and, and then moved forward with the purchase of the property. There's been other situations where, for example, in the case of, of Union Corners, uh we had a partnership years ago, uh a joint partnership between the developer and the city to clean up the property. Uh, there was a point in time though where we actually gained title to the property back and, and there was still actually some contamination that required to be cleaned up. So it's really varied, uh depending on, on the circumstance of the purchase and what we perceived to be the contamination there. Um, but there is precedence for moving forward with a purchase without uh fully knowing a hundred percent uh what was present on the site.
Sorry, I mute myself because my ten-month-old she is crying in the background, so there's quite a bit of tantrum happening, so uh I appreciate that, I think so uh uh the, the question which I was trying to get answered was about brownfields, especially industrial area like in, industrial area like Oscar Meyer, which historically from Phase One and from D N R, we know there is a quite a bit of intense uh contamination under here, like building as Tom, Tom Lynch mentioned, the Building Fifty and the uh, the Building Forty Three is extremely contaminated, especially with the vapor contamination and uh Bryn, can you please explain some of those contamination and also put them in a scale, um if ever in the city history or in your experience, you have seen those type of contamination in other places which Matt uh uh Matt mentioned about, you know, he gave a idea about different location which city purchased, I want to just get a little more clarity comparing with Oscar Meyer, have you ever seen, first explain what contaminations are there in Building Forty Three and how big they are and either you found similar contamination in other projects with city purchase or not?
Okay, um, to start, if, for everyone who doesn't know, when you buy a real estate, when we buy industrial or commercial properties, a Phase One is a document, a historical document review and a Phase Two which is what's being contested here is where you take soil and groundwater samples. Um, on the Oscar Meyer site, the portion that we're interested in buying, there is an open site with the D N R. The main contaminant of concern is a chlorinated solvent called tri-chloroethylene, people also call it T C E. And the biggest concern is that if you have vapors in the soil, it can go up through the foundation of a building and you can, you can breathe it in. So it's, it's a, I would say it's a fairly high concern, it's also a very well-understood contaminant and it, because it's open with the D N R, it's going through the D N R remediation process, so they're not just mitigating it, which means um making sure it doesn't impact people, they're actually going to install what's called a soil vapor extraction system. It's these perforated pipes that will go underneath the building and they'll apply a strong vacuum to it and they will suck the contaminated vapor out of the soil and put it through a filter um and in that process aerate the soil to the point where it should uh break down the contamination that's there or remove it. Um, that's the first approach to ensuring the safety of Building Forty, Forty Three. In addition to that, there's going to have to be testing inside Building Forty Three to ensure that it's working, that there aren't other vapors coming up and that uh understanding how the soil vapor system is going to be operated, maintained and uh tested and eventually closed out, that will all be those uh, that, that will be part of our condo agreement with Reich Raven to ensure that there's safe indoor air quality for employees, that's something that, it's a definitely something that we will guarantee. And, and you had asked about properties, so I, I'd say we, we haven't bought a ton of properties with open contaminant sites on them, open when I mean that, I, I mean it's a, a site that hasn't been closed with the D N R yet. But most recently, for example, we did buy the Sands property, which was part of the Central Park or Mick Pike Park and that had uh known contamination on it as well.
And you mentioned about the level of T C E and, and other volatile chemicals documented by D N R in Building Forty Three. And is there a possibility this contamination and are spread beyond Building Forty Three into the uh uh in large plumes? Is there a possibility?
Well, so they, because Reich Raven bought the property recently, they conducted their own Phase One as well as a fairly extensive Phase Two where they took soil and groundwater samples across the site. Um, based on those results, they forwarded, they, they gave the data to the D N R and the D N R opened up three new sites and one of them is a petroleum site and two of them are these chlorinated solvent sites. Uh, so it's, it's definitely a possibility that this chemical got into the groundwater um that the groundwater testing they've done around the building, they have not seen an indication of it as spreading laterally or even very deep, so surprisingly, the groundwater results around the building are actually pretty good. Um, one thing that might be working in our favor is that for a long line, a long time, Oscar Meyer operated its own uh production wells and as a result, that created a very strong downward gradient for groundwater. So whereas in other parts of the city, contamination might, might move laterally in a plume, um, most contamination there seemed to move down, so that's, so the good thing is that it's not impacting the shallow water, which is what is going to impact vapor intrusion into buildings.
So, so for the sake of health of its resident and surrounding, we all know the plume has been spreading for decades underground and via stormwater, storm and sanitary drains, because those drains are attached historically, for the sake of health of its resident, but does the owner did any investigation on, on the plumes and potential, potential explorers to the resident and worker who will work there? Or is this some, or is there something which city will do?
I mean, with regard to groundwater contamination, there's no indication that there is shallow groundwater that's contaminated, that's leaving the property and that is what would be a concern to residents. There is a deeper plume of another chemical that did go south toward the Demetral landfill, but that um was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty feet deep. So that is not uh, that's not a public health concern. It's not great, but um it isn't, it, it's not an immediate concern to, to human health. And there's nothing that, you know, ideally, the city does Phase Two work before we buy a property, however, in this case, we can't. We already have enrolled the Oscar Meyer property in our EPA Brownfield Site Assessment Program, so we the city was awarded three hundred thousand dollars a year ago from the EPA to conduct these exact type of investigations and we've done a Phase One, which we can release to anyone who's interested. Uh, and then we've come up with what we'd like to do for a Phase Two and we have, can use that grant money to pay for the Phase Two once we've purchased the property.
Yeah, so once you purchase and you do Phase Two and if we find a major contamination after city investigation, who will pay for that cost?
That's a good question, um, right now, we're, as Tom Lynch mentioned, we're, we plan on hiring a, a very well-esteem environmental attorney who's going to help us structure an escrow account, so the escrow could pay for it. Um, in addition, because we're a local government union unit as a city, we get certain protections from the state for buying contaminated properties and uh and, and that's one other way that the city can protect itself, and last of all, even though Kraft Heinz has sold this property, um and and that's one other way that the city can protect itself. And last of all, even though Kraft Heinz has sold this property, um they own the property for a hundred years and they are can still considered a responsible party. So that's um you know, that might be a last resort if we, if we had to go that way.
And and escrow, what exactly I, for my knowledge, knowledge for people who are listening, what exactly escrow is and how does that work? Do we have any historic example where city buy a brownfield? And we did those type of arrangement?
I think this is a question for the mass.
Yeah, Mike can answer or Matt can answer.
Maybe Matt McLejesky or Matt Walker, do you wanna answer that?
I was trying to, um, so we use escrow accounts for a variety of things in transactions to cover unknown costs, to cover fees that aren't fully established. Um, I think this is probably the first time we've used it for environmental, um, in particular, but it's not uncommon to do transactions with escrow accounts, which basically as part of the at closing, a certain amount of the sale price goes into a segregated account for a certain amount of time. And after we figure out what the sort of final issue is going to be, some of that money can be drawn down to pay for something. So, for example, um, Matt, feel free to chime in, we've used these sorts of accounts um at the city-owned Center for Industry and Commerce, um, where there's roadwork being done and we kind of know what that charge is gonna be, um, but we aren't gonna know until sort of after the buildings are constructed, um, and at that point, money gets drawn from that account to pay for some of this work from the sales proceeds. Um, so it's a tool to to manage the kind of unknowns of real estate.
So, okay, and and I know initially, I remember I have been in several presentation, Tom Lynch presented about why this location was big. And the cost effectiveness. With this exactly situation with contamination, where the owner of the property is not allowing ci- allowing the city to do its own independent investigation, uh, I have a deep concerns about historic contamination in the Oscar Meyer and if that contamination we find when we purchase and and then the cost will impact. Have you ever did some cost analyses? Like where will we, like hypothetically, where we'll stand? Kind of this project, knowing the existing, like Bren, you know about contamination there already. How much that will cost city with escrow?
Well, we have taken that into consideration for especially the northern portion that we're going to buy outright, so the the section of the the north part of the site, north of the two buildings, we're gonna buy that outright, and we are just assuming by default that we're gonna have to landfill uh, everything that we excavate from the site. So we've come up with some plans of a mock-up building, a typical slab-on-grade building, we've calculated what volume is soil is gonna come out and we understand those landfill costs. And I think that we have, we have good estimates for that.
So the letter of intent which we will present to common council eventually, would those direction will be mentioned in letter of contact, like what type of the role city is gonna do? In removing the contamination? Because I never seen letter of intent from the city as a new order, how it's written, especially with the brownfield.
So the letter of intent will really outline um the purchase price and to what extent the escrow agreement, the dollar figure, what's eligible costs, the process for figuring out how money gets drawn from from that account, but that's like I said, actively being negotiated and we're working to bring the attorney on who's going to sort of specialize in that piece, so I don't think we know exactly what those are going to look like at this.
And then, Bren, I have a question for you, uh, if we read the city's two thousand nineteen R F B. And and in that R F B, it's mentioned that there is a reason to do P F A S testing at O M side. Because the, because P F A S was found at Burke uh Silver Side. Which Oscar Meyer used for years, right? So either are we going to do P F A S test testing? Did owner of the building for phase two, did they share their P F A S testing or not?
There's been no P F A S testing on the Oscar Meyer site that we've seen. And I, I don't know yet if we're gonna recommend it. I mean, the levels that have been found at the Burke plant relatively speaking, compared to what's coming from the airport are pretty low. Um, I I don't know yet if we're gonna recommend doing P F A S testing, once we get to the stage of actually figuring out what the phase two is gonna look like specifically.
Hmm. I, I, that's also like, you know, whole east side is suffering through V F A S at the moment. And I, this is the huge concerns I'm hearing from my constituent and also um quite a bit from east side, everybody's talking about P F A S. Uh, I will highly encourage city, once we get into that stage, to look into P F A S testing too. Uh, because the P F A S is still there, might be the the quantity is not there, what you mentioned, but it's still there.
Right, I think, you know, when it comes to contamination, the important thing is the exposure pathway. And so with the east side, people were concerned about being exposed through drinking water and through through fish consumption or through touching creek water. Um, so that's something that we'll have to weigh.
Hmm.
But I hear your concern.
Okay, and and regarding uh Matt, uh, question about Oscar Meyer contract with Robin and Reich about not allowing city to do phase two testing, which is I I also have a concern with that because I trust city process. And city, we have more oversight on the city work and transparency. Uh, with city work not having those thing in front of us, is there a possibility to get access to that contract?
So, um, you mean, so we've seen their phase two that they've done and the results of it. Um, so you're saying to see the agreement between Kraft Heinz and Reich Raven?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think they're willing to share it, and we can go back and talk about it, I guess I'm, I don't I don't remember exactly what they said when we had this discussion with them before, and Matt, I don't know if you have, but I
Yeah, I think they've uh um they have, according to my recollection, they have not, um they're not willing to share that. I think they believe that's contract between them and whom they purchased it from, and they don't feel it's a public record document.
Hmm. Okay, and and Bren, uh, sorry, I have, if I the other order have question, I will let them go. I still have a couple of more questions. All right, I, so, I I was also curious uh, to hear about Burke side, because Oscar Meyer used Burke plant for years, and there is a contamination they found there. And would in a phase two, would we do the whole analysis of silver system and the Burke? And try to see how far that contamination is spread?
Uh, I mean, if we put, if we do a phase two on Oscar Meyer, it will have to be restricted to the Oscar Meyer site and M G N E, they did P F A S testing and environmental testing when they bought the former Burke plant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, unfortunately, we yeah testing can only go so far. Ideally, some of this information would come out in a phase one, having an understanding of how they use the plant and how much volume went there, but I, we're, unfortunately, we're beyond that, like there's there's no one else to interview and we're not going to get any infor- more information out of Reich Raven. So I don't know, um I don't, I don't know what else we would find out in terms of the relationship between Burke and and Oscar Meyer.
That's also true, like if uh the city is not bound by what the D N R does or does not, we can still for the sake of public health, we can still do big P F A S testing and make sure public health is safe and the, and then our creek and and water is safe for people to eat fish and food, can we?
Of course.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I, so, two more questions I have. Uh, my one question is about overall Oscar Meyer strategic assessment is moving forward. And D N R also mentioned some contamination on Hart Meyer property. Uh, if we purchase this fifteen acre, would we will be able to really see the whole area? As a whole, like what is happening other part of the Oscar Meyer's strategic assessment plan, or either we are going to just being contained to that fifteen acre?
With regard to environmental study?
Yes.
It would just, it would just be on the land that we own, or the condo parcel and the land and the person and the lot that we're buying outright. We can't do any testing on Hart Meyer. Although I did, we did reach out today to our contact with the Hart Meyer estate and asked if they were interested in being part of our EPA groundfield grant, because we think it would be a great property and it's, it's free to the owner. But um, so far, I only know about, the only thing I know about Hart Meyer is what's shown up in the phase one reports that I've looked at and what's on the D N R's website.
Mm-hmm. Is there a possibility we can get that M G E data that you mentioned before about their testing?
For P F A S?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can send that to you, it's on, it's on the D N R's website.
That would be great. Uh, thank you very much for giving a detailed presentation. I, as you can see from my uh, question, these questions are, um, majority of these questions are coming from residents who are living close by and have a lot of concerns about their health and contamination. And also they have concern about building forty three because union worker and the and public transportation will be there in future and how we can look after them. Uh, one small question is, and this is I, trust me, this gonna be a last question, is let's say if this project won't move forward. Uh, let's say we don't purchase this fifteen acre or for some, any reason. Would still we have an opportunity if one we do, uh, uh, if the district, tax incremental district and we use TIF money, could city have that power when they use those type of money to do environmental assessment phase two or not?
Well, not on private property unless they give us access.
So regardless, if we use our TIF money for any project, we cannot do any sort of those testing.
Yeah, maybe that can
While Matt's raising his hand.
So we, we can definitely use TIF funding for environmental assessment. But to Bren's point, uh, we can't use TIF funding to go onto a private property and do testing without the permission of the property owner. So just as, as Bren mentioned before, you know, right now we have EPA funding and we're working with property owners throughout the city who may want to utilize that to do additional testing on the property. We can do the same with TIF, uh, but we just need the permission of the property owner to do that.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate for all the information. I I think it's very important for fellow orders and community to hear those questions and get an understanding, uh, what's happening with the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Seth, I appreciate it. And uh, thank you, Alder Bass. We're going to go on to um, item number five, six oh five two zero. Do I need a motion for that? Oh, sorry. Uh, Alder Campbell, just one moment.
Okay, I just had a quick question, a quick question for Steph. When do you expect to be bringing this item before Finance Committee?
Oh, sorry, folks.
So we're, we're bringing the uh contract for the environmental attorney, um, I think is moving its way through, so we can get them on board and they'll work on the sort of escrow and environmental protection piece. We're continuing to work, our engineering colleagues are working with the designers and engineers on their side to figure out the exact scope of what Reich Raven would need to do before they hand the building over to us. Um, some of it is just, you know, removing equipment, some of it is to make the saleable condo, you know, the firewall between us, so um, we've been working for months with them to sort of scope out sort of what they're gonna do, what's gonna fall on a public works contract, those sorts of pieces, so um like Tom started this, we were hoping to have it done already, but that hasn't happened, um, we've been moving a little slower, so I hope that, you know, by the end of summer, sometime in summer, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we'd be bringing, we'd have a, an L O I. This is sort of agreed between the two of us and we can start moving it.
So you, you would bring the L O I to Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Okay, end of the summer.
That's the hope. Tom, you're muted.
Tom, do you have your? Hold on. Tom, can you put your, oh, there you do, okay. Now I can find you when you have your hand up.
Okay, yes, um, like I said, this has been, um going much slower than we wanted. Uh, I would like to be an optimist. Uh, but I'm uh, I'm becoming a realist. Um, this is uh complicated, that's why we're enlisting extra help, specialized help. Um, we would like uh to have this introduced um, by the end of summer, but it could fall. Uh, we fully expect this to be, you know, transparent, it will go before uh council refer to finance and then back, this is, this will be a transparent process.
Alder Campbell, do you have any more questions or?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I will, um say thank you to our staff for coming in and giving us an update. Oh, just one moment. I'm getting premature with my thank yous.
I, I will finish your thank you. I was just raising my hand once more to just say thanks to Bren, uh, taking those questions. I know we had a phone call as well. Uh, these are question, I think so you can hear from me and others, we are worried about. And we trust city and we, we hope this process remain transparent. And and pe- people keep that trust on the city to really do a good job. And moving forward, we can definitely engage and I want community engagement as well on this particular property, especially around those contamination and create that trust among city and community. So thanks again to you and also other city staff for being here and providing that information.
Okay, and thank you one last time. Uh, we will move on to item number five, logistical six oh five two zero. Do I need a motion for this? Then we, oh, hold on.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, is there any discussion, raise your hand, and if, uh, you wanted the sponsors, I would like for you to um, present this, discuss, lead this discussion. Alder Max?
Alder Max, can you, there you go.
Hi, everyone, sorry, I'm right, there you go. Um, yeah, let's do it. Hi, everyone, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna pull those leave for this ordinance. Uh, basically, uh, you know, the motivation behind this was, um you know, it shouldn't come to a surprise to anyone, especially given the recent events that uh, we, we can't do our ability as a common council, we can't fulfill our duties as elected representatives unless we have you know, our own power to um, schedule our own meetings, um, and you know, I think, I think this res- this ordinance amendment does a really good job at um, synthesizing two different sides of an argument that, you know, um we can't trust certain people to do stuff and it also, um, you know, establishes some of a process um, so that we can Um, so that we can, um, you know, ensure that we're like. Uh, adhering to the guidelines, public health guidelines if we're in another, um, you know, crisis like this. I I think everyone can agree that the amendment or the ordinance that was passed in. March, um, I think it was March, um, was, you know, it was, at the time, it seemed justified. And now I think we can see just how true, given, you know, massive protests as well, like. Um, our ability to do our jobs is hindered by it um through and through. Um, and I I think, um, so I guess I'll just quickly mention like a couple of details about it, um, since that's probably important. Um, we, so so we looked at this, I had, I had conversations with um city attorney about. Um, when exactly this would kick in, um, and so. It seems like there is an overall um opinion and I, I agree that it's keeping an ordinance, you know, vague or, um. You know, a little bit, a little bit more broad because obviously we can't predict, you know, if, God hope we get into this situation again. Um, don't get into the situation, but, you know, making sure that we're not tying the council's hands. Um, and so, yeah, I think another, another big thing that people were um talking about was. Um, it, this time it's, it's changing it, so the mayor and the council president. Um, obviously looping in the council this time, so now it's mayor, council president or the common council. Uh, and that goes back to the idea of like, um, you know. Again, it almost isn't even like, if we can trust a certain group and it's, um, you know, really about putting faith in our democratic institutions and. Um, you know, if there is no trust for the council to make such a decision, if that was the reasoning, then. Like, why does the council exist in the first place and we can't, you know, but make these decisions? Um, so, yeah, but there was also, I I guess I'd quickly just touch on a tiny part since I had a few people bringing it up. Um, about like in a situation where we sell the public health order and face to face, um, contact poses a risk. What about, you know, uh, groups of, you know, two hundred fifty or five hundred people? Um, like, they would still be in effect saying like we can't have concerts and stuff like that. Um, and so I talked that through with Mike and there's some language in this that says, um. Let me get the full, yeah, so it says, um. The city of Madison, uh, or health emergency or other emergency that is applicable to the city of Madison. Um, that limits or prohibits face to face gatherings of a group the size of a subunit. Um, and so that was, uh, I just wanted to mention that, that that pretty much addresses the, um, the concern that. Having this kick in when there isn't a health order that poses a risk to face, uh, face to face impact. And we can still have these meetings, um, there, there can be exceptions that the city can make. Um, so, yeah, overall, I just, I think this is really about, you know, returning our legislative authority at a time when we have the capability to do so. Um, we're long past June second, uh, or we're long past, you know, when this was, when this was um passed by the council. Um, and there's just so many new issues that are coming before us that I, I almost feel like. You know, a lot of what we're seeing is justifying why we should have this ability now more than ever. Um, so, yeah, I can answer, there's other, there's other sponsors on this call too that I'm sure would. Our interest in talking, but I hope that um gives a good overview of it.
Muted, here we go. So are there any other questions regarding um this substitute? Okay, since there's no other questions regarding this. Uh, is there any objection to recording this, uh, recording a unanimous vote in favor of this item? Okay, I see no hands raised. Is there any objection in me, um, objection to a unanimous vote? Just one moment. Alder Hannah. Are you unmuted?
Okay. Yep, I don't want to object, I just wanted to say thank you to Max for bringing this forward. Um, Alder Prestigiacomo, I appreciate the the work that you put into this. And um, from what I've heard, I haven't talked to you directly on this uh topic since you started editing, but. Um, it's my understanding that you reached out to a lot of different parties and and really put a lot of work into. Um, making this something that is well refined and and um. Has taken a lot of different voices into into consideration, so I appreciate that and thank you for your work.
Thank you. So uh, going back, so there's uh no objections. Um, to recording this as a unanimous vote. Then we will record this as a unanimous vote. And so, um. We're at the end of our uh meeting tonight, I just want to, before we adjourn. I would like to remind everyone that on June twenty fifth, Janelle will be um giving us an update. Regarding COVID nineteen. Um, and Janelle is, unless there's something comes up, Janelle is the only. Uh, item on that agenda for the special meeting. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Alder Abbas?
Motion to adjourn by both of us.
Well done, well done, Alder Hannah.
Second.
Okay, it's been moving properly, seconded, all in favor. And I know that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.